However, the cameras have also drawn criticism from some activists concerned that the material will not be made available to the public through public records requests. Mayor Eric Garcetti recently addressed that concern.
The first filing that is coming from one of these this week here is a domestic violence incident. And the evidence from it is of an altercation or engagement of the suspect and the victim in that incident. That is not something that should be shared publicly. We should not have a policy that says automatically that goes out to the public. I want accountability on both parts.
I don't want one victim to not call the Los Angeles Police Department because she is afraid that what she reports to us will wind up on YouTube or in the public domain.
Videos will be made accessible only after the chief approves their release to the public. All LAPD officers are expected to be wearing the cameras by the end of next year. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week. Officials say an analysis will be done after six months to check on the efficiency of the cameras. Well, it's been a long time coming, but now kids in the San Fernando Valley can finally have a real kick on the field. These young soccer players are trying out their new synthetic soccer field at the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks War Memorial Park. The beautiful new turf is a stunning sight and a welcome relief from the dust and rock covered fields the players used to play on. They say that for years, there was no grass, making it hard to play ball, but not anymore.
It's way better. It's easier to play soccer and kick the ball.
Council District Four, the Department of Rec and Parks, and other city departments recently unveiled three new synthetic fields for the neighborhood.
They need a place to come and play. Parents need a place to have their kids and parents get exercise, so we're really hopeful that this is the first step in the city fixing the rest of this great park, which, you know, just serves the community.
Located in one of the most heavily used sports complexes, the fields host thousands of soccer games each year. But with a lack of rainfall, officials said maintaining natural turf proved difficult, so they decided to go another direction.
This is the latest and newest and greatest generation of synthetic fields anywhere in the city of Los Angeles.
The synthetic turf, which costs $2.7 million, allows the fields to be used year round and will result in substantial water conservation. The fields will save 5.5 million gallons of water a year. This brings the number of synthetic fields in Los Angeles to more than 30. City engineers said they use the best material available.
This infield material is 100% natural, environmentally safe, and organic. Yes!
The synthetic fields are expected to last up to 10 years. While active-duty Navy ships dock in San Pedro to flex their military might, Gil Reyes reports from the sold-out L.A. Navy Days.
Visitors lucky enough to snag tickets before they sold out, got a chance to climb aboard and check out the gun show.
Just the fact that it was for families and I just want to educate my son about the military and how they support our country and protect our country and basically let him know that these are the superheroes, the real superheroes of our world.
Thousands of visitors showed up at the L.A. Harbor for L.A. Navy Days. That's where three active-duty Navy ships docked temporarily for public tours. Modern American sea power up close.
So if you guys look to the rear, or if you look at this system right here, it's the VLS vertical launching system. All right? It just fires a bunch of missiles. You have a missile for just about everything. You have anti-air, anti-sub.
The visiting vessels included two guided missile cruisers from San Diego, the USS Bunker Hill and the USS Cape St. George. Also docked, the guided missile destroyer, the USS Halsey from Pearl Harbor.
My girlfriend's son is actually going to be on, what's the ship?
The USS Halsey. He's gonna be reporting in Pearl Harbor when it goes over there.
So we're looking forward to seeing these amazing ships.
And I'll get to see it before he does.
A family affair for sure onboard these maritime models of military might. At the Port of L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Though the visiting vessels have sailed home, the port's very own USS Iowa and Lane Victory are open on most days for museum tours. Well, as we reported earlier, city leaders announced an international redesign competition for Pershing Square, creating a buzz on social media. Here's this week in tweets. After the announcement of the competition, Pershing Square Renew posted, "A public-private partnership at its best as #DTLA community participates as co-creators and visionaries." Juan Vasquez tweeted, "It's about community taking ownership over the use of space. Will be awesome to see how Pershing Square Renew brings this to downtown L.A." Pershing Square Renew also wrote, "The challenge is not just a design competition, but a challenge to create a space that everyone loves. #PershingsquareRenewChallenge." And Pershing Square also posted a pic of Councilmember Jose Huizar at the announcement, writing, "Take part in re-envisioning Pershing Square, L.A.'s oldest park in the heart of the city. We challenge everyone to reimagine the park as a world-class public space." And later, Pershing Square Renew posted a black-and-white flashback photo to four architects in 1987, holding up models for the redesign of Pershing Square. To participate in the competition, visit pershingsquarerenew.com/competition. And that's a look at this week in tweets. While a street in Pacoima that used to attract crime and loitering is now a People's Street Plaza for neighborhood events. Gil Reyes reports from Pacoima.
Folklorico dancers celebrate the official opening of Pacoima's new neighborhood hangout. It's a one-block stretch of Bradley Avenue now called Bradley Avenue Plaza.
Do you remember how it used to look like and how does it compare to now?
Oh, it's night and day.
This is amazing what's going on here.
Pacoima resident Alisa Avalos Venzer feels safe enough to bring her kids here to exercise on new fitness equipment or to relax on shaded outdoor furniture.
But before this, it was basically a dead-end outlet. When we had a lot of issues, not just with cars, but we had issues where you had people loitering and really not doing anything that was productive. Now, you've got a space that the community can not only enjoy, but really draws people from outside of the community, which is great.
Pacoima area councilman Felipe Fuentes teamed with neighborhood groups like Pacoima Beautiful to help raise money for the Spruce Up, turning Bradley into what the city calls "a People's Street Plaza."
Area residents already taking advantage of Bradley Plaza, hosting free zumba and breakdancing exhibitions and classes, and also free Wi-Fi will be available here soon. But what else do area residents want to see?
More exercise machines, more tables, more kid-friendly things, because if the kids find it exciting and fun, then they're gonna drag out their parents.
Dan Barnett, owner of the local laundromat, says he likes the plaza and agrees. The visitors and their events improve the neighborhood.
But they don't have any parking, and so they come into my area, where my customers would have parked and parked there. And they don't really know not to park here, but they don't read the signs that I have posted.
So jot that down. More parking spaces, yet another suggestion to make this great street even greater.
Please come to Pacoima. It's a different Pacoima, and it's a better Pacoima.
In Pacoima, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Two other People's Street Plazas are located in Lamert Park and in North Hollywood. While enjoy theater in the woods for the whole family, podcasting takes center stage, and get the inside scoop on architect Frank Gehry. All this and this week's things to do. Sunday mornings mean fun for families at Will Gears Theatrical Botanicum in Topanga. Peter Asop's annual Kids Concert Series takes place in the Theatricum's magical outdoor amphitheater in the woods. On September 20th, enjoy Rhythm Child as Norman Jones beats his drums and plays soulful rhythms, making music for parents that kids can understand. He was the winner of the John Lennon Songwriting Contest grand prize, recipient of both a National Parenting Publication Gold Award and a citation from the Los Angeles City Council. He also got an invitation to play at the White House. Will Gears Theatrical Botanicum is located at 1419 North Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Topanga, midway between Malibu and the San Fernando Valley. For more information and to purchase tickets, call 310-455-3723. The Los Angeles Podcast Festival is back for its fourth year of bringing the biggest names in podcasting together for a three-day extravaganza at the luxurious Sofitel Hotel in Los Angeles. During the course of the weekend-long event taking place September 18 through the 20th, you'll see live podcast recordings, panels, special events, and parties, along with a special stand-up comedy show on Saturday, September 19. The Sofitel Hotel is located at 8555 Beverly Boulevard. For tickets, visit Eventbrite.com and search Podcast. Architect Frank Gehry and architecture critic Paul Goldberg discuss Gehry's prolific and groundbreaking career to mark the opening of the special exhibition Frank Gehry. Gehry presents a comprehensive examination of his extraordinary body of work from the early 1960s to the present, featuring more than 200 drawings, many of which have never been seen publicly, and 65 models that illuminate the evolution of Gehry's thinking. Tracing the arc of his career, the exhibition focuses on two main themes: urbanism and the development of the new systems of digital design and fabrication, including his use of a software tool which allows the digital manipulation of 3D representations. This retrospective offers an opportunity to reflect on the development of Gehry's work and to understand the processes of one of the great architectural minds. The exhibit runs now through March 20 at Lacma, located at 5905 Wilshire Boulevard. For more, visit lacma.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome, welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonner, Bustano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Carrats, Kirkroyan, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Bloomingfield moves. Rue seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mitch Englander moves. Harris Dawson seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file items 1D, J, L, and M, inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full, and to continue item 1Z to October 7.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Cards on 1 and 7, sir.
Let's hold those items and let us vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Let's continue.
Very good, sir. And those ordinances will go over one week for a second reading unless reconsidered later with 12 members. Items 9 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 37 should be held for an amending motion, sir.
Well, let's do that. Members, any other specials? Items 9 through 37? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, why don't we prepare to vote on these items? Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 38 through 56 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. What items do, or what cards do we have on these items?
Mr. President, we do have cards on items 38, 44, 45, 47, 53, 55.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on the remaining items. Please, please open the roll. Let's hold 52 as well, but let's open the... One second. Well, we held that, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Well, we held that, so, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Again, sir, those ordinances will go over one week unless reconsidered later. That brings us to items 57 and 58. They're item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'm going to look to Mr. Krikorian on the closed session items for your guidance.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 57 will need to be considered in closed session. Item 58, Budget and Finance Committee waived, but when we heard it in Claims Board, Claims Board recommended approval of the City Attorney's Recommendations for Settlement. So that can be voted on in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, we'll hold, we'll hold, we have cards, so we will deal with that in open session. So we'll hold, I guess that was 58. Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. President, 1Q and 1R if it could be continued for two weeks. Sorry for calling them out of order here. 1Q, 1R.
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, 2 weeks brings us to the League of Cities recess. The first meeting thereafter is Tuesday, October 6.
Okay, does that work? So then we will hold those items over until that date. Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations. Are items called special?
All right, thank you. Mr. Bonner?
I apologize. I meant to call item 34 special for an amendment. Could we reconsider that and call it special?
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration for item 34. Let us open the roll and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Is it a verbal amendment? Okay, well then let's hear the vote verbal, and then maybe we can then move it.
Thanks. This is a TCT Committee report that considered recommendations for some of the expenditures from the Innovation Fund. There were a couple of recommendations that didn't make it that we wanted to add, and that is to amend the TCT Committee report to add the following two instructions, which is to request that the fire department be included in the Identify Superusers for Services via Outreach, the ISSO pilot program, and to request that LAPD, LAFD, and LASSA report to the Homelessness and Poverty Committee within 90 days following implementation of the pilot program for an update.
Thank you. So let us, on this item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, if I could get Mr. Englander.
Okay, where does that take us?
Mr. Clerk?
All right, let's go ahead and take up item 45, if we could. And John Walsh, followed by Eric Previn. Or whoever makes it up there first.
You said item 45?
Item 45.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Item 45, this concerns... What does this concern? I've never seen anything like this on any agenda of any organization. Measures to address the issue of inappropriate graphic images on social media. Now, are you going to decide? Am I inappropriate? Are you talking about vaginas? Are you talking about breasts? Are you talking about murder? Inappropriate? What's inappropriate? And these people up here won't tell you. They'll vote for this. This is a vote that the ACLU should be talking about. Inappropriate graphic images on social media to address... What are you talking about? The city, this city, look, the whole city's falling apart, the sidewalks are falling apart, and you're worried about a human breast on a website? How dare you get involved in inappropriate... What is an appropriate image? Now, they're going to vote for this. Scumbags like Coetz is going to vote for it. ACLU scumbag like Coetz is going to vote for this. But he won't tell us what an inappropriate image is. If you find an inappropriate image somewhere, are you going to arrest that person? Are you going to put that person in jail? Now, the LA Times, they're almost gone, so there's no answer to that. I want to know, measures to be taken to address the issue of inappropriate graphic images on social media. Take care of what you're supposed to take care of, and don't worry about social media. And I want you to take this issue, fold it four ways, and shove it up your ass.
All right, we're not going to applaud the speech. Shh. Mr. Previn, before I start your time, one second, please. I know we have a lot of visiting distinguished guests here that I see as well, and wanted to thank them for coming in. I'm sure they're going to be introduced in a moment. And let you know that the time for general public comment is an opportunity for folks, quite literally, under the First Amendment, to say whatever they want, and often you will hear that. And so, as you hear folks come up and speak, these, a lot of these folks are regular, and they come every meeting, and wish to speak, we'll say their mind, and share their thoughts. But they are, under the First Amendment, allowed to often say virtually anything unless they're disrupting the meeting, unless they're off topic, and we have certain rules. But anyway, Mr. Previn actually adheres to those pretty well, so start your time. Thank you very much.
It is Eric Previn from CD2, sir, and though I do appreciate the endorsement, it is not necessary. The kids are very bright, and they know exactly what's happening, and they know what this item is about, I'm sure. Because this is an interesting item put together by Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Bloomingfield, who are both, I'm pretty sure, parents and are concerned. They have some genuine concerns, as I think many adults do, that children in particular might be exposed to certain images on the Internet. We have all, as parents and as kids as well, been exposed to that kind of stuff, and there is a feeling sometimes that we ought to kind of try to limit that, or harness it, or get it out of the world. But as we know, here in America, the First Amendment does provide that we are going to have to tolerate some of that, even though when it makes us very upset and very angry. You know, we, in this very hall, sometimes have exposure to images that can shock people's conscience a little bit. And you know, my advice with my remaining minute for these youngsters, and I would like to thank Mr. Bloomingfield, hashtag Bloomingfield, one more time, for all of his efforts in this area, because it is a troublesome space. However, the city of Los Angeles is, has a certain kind of jurisdiction. There are about 4 million people here. LA County is 10 million people. The state of California is many, many more, tens of billions. So I'm not sure that this body is able to really do too much regarding legislation or an ordinance of any kind. I don't, because the city attorney here is a misdemeanor-only prosecutor. I'm not sure that even the kinds of laws that we might want to construe. So though I do think we should see what we can do, and see what we can do in terms of getting awareness out. There are some very good organizations in this space to alert children to websites that might be problematic. I do think that we should resist invading the kind of privacy space, and going into petty legalistic space on this stuff. Because the Internet is an explosion of communication, and 99% of it's good.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other cards on this item, we'll go ahead and open the roll, colleagues?
Mr. Englander?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I just wanted to speak for a second to disabuse Mr. Walsh and others who might have misconceptions about this, this motion. This motion is targeted at social media networks that broadcast photos of homicide victims, gunshot wound victims, or assault victims, puts them on the Internet, and makes fun of their families and friends. We believe that if these companies can protect studios and take their movies down when someone illegally puts it up, they can also help protect our community and take those images down when they're put up. So that's what we're asking for in this motion. Thank you.
I appreciate that. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Excellent, thank you very much. And now, we've got a very, very special presentation, colleagues. Council President Herb Wesson. The floor is yours.
Yeah, if I could get all of these good-looking students to come and stand beside me, I want them to be able to be seen on television, all right? Not me, but them. Come on.
And of course, Mr. President, you matched them as well today, so you've got your school uniform on.
Yes, the instructor, instructor called me this morning to let me know what colors they were wearing, and I wanted to coordinate with them, yes.
That's a great-looking photo.
Are we good? Members, Mr. President, and members. When I first started in this business, and I would talk about computers are the way of the future. Well, that future is now, and that future is today. And it is my honor and pleasure to present to you a group of phenomenal young people, and also my dear friend Daphne Bradford, who was awarded, received an award from the President of the United States for efforts to try to take our children and bring them into the 21st century where it relates to computers and coding and a variety of things. Many of you recently may have seen, in fact, Mr. Bonner is a, is a kind of a television buff from time to time. There's this commercial where you can see this blue-collar family really proud of their son because he's gotten a job with General Electric. So the father goes down in the basement, and he pulls out this sludge hammer, a big sludge hammer, and he says, "Well, I want to give you this sludge hammer so you can, you know, go on and work for General Electric and do your job." And he kept saying, "Dad, I'm doing the coding for the computers." The dad was like, "He can't lift the thing." The point, the point is, this is not the future, this is today. I first met this young lady. I went into a class at Dorsey High School, and she was teaching coding to these children so the children could come up with their own computer games. But when you learn how to code, you can do anything, anything on the computer. So you take advantage of their desire to play while you're really teaching them how to build a future for themselves. I don't have the words to articulate how proud I am of Daphne and the work that she has done in the South region of this great city. What people don't realize is that US children, hear me, members, US children are so far and falling further behind where it relates to computer science. We are being dwarfed, dwarfed by other countries. And then when you look at the students that come from the area that Mr. Weezer represents, and Mr. Price, and myself, and Mr. Sadio, and I could go on and on, we're even further behind. This woman is trying to provide them with an opportunity where they can set their own destiny. Now, I'm going to ask Daphne to come up and articulate what she actually does. Because I know I am not doing this, I am not doing the best that I can. But I want you to listen to her. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a round of applause to Daphne Bradford from Dorsey High School and all of these students that we are recognizing today. So if you could please do a much better job than I in explaining what brings us here today, what we're celebrating, and where we think, what effect will this have on our children going forward?
Good morning, everyone, and Council President Wesson, you did an excellent job. I am a dear friend. We go back a long way. But we're here today because with almost no money, I designed the first AP Computer Science pathway in all of South LA. I was allowed to do that at Dorsey High School because, can you believe, they were going to shut the Math and Science Magnet Academy down? The only one we have in South LA. And after coming from DC, Washington DC, sobbing and crying, and yes, still broke, we all came together with a wonderful staff, Dr. Gaston, who is the principal of the Math and Science Magnet, is here today, along with Ms. Jackson and Ms. Brown, the coordinator who coordinates the classes.
Let's get him around in the class.
Ms. Brown, the college counselor. And with just heart and soul and a lot of work, we were able to put things together. So just to give you a little history, and I'll be brief. Merrick Garcia came on board for his summer of learning. There was a grant opportunity, and we were blessed with $75,000. But before that happened, I told them to keep the doors open, you need to create this pathway. And I came to the school one morning, trying to figure out, oh, Lord, how am I going to do this? And they said, "Here you go." So I had to do it. So we got that money, and I said, "Okay, let me work it." Then we ran out. But the pathway was there. But it was too young for me not to be there. So I called Council President Wesson and said, "You got to come and see this program that I'm doing. Everybody's been, come and see." And my students, who are standing behind me, showed him what cloud computing does, what it is, explained it, showed them games and apps that they had learned, and I sat back and I watched. And for the staff at Dorsey High School, my staff with Mother of Many Diana and Miss Imani over here, serving as teachers, our job was in progress. And today, I am proud to say that Mother of Many, my nonprofit, has partnered with President Herb Wesson and his district to spread computer science throughout South LA as far as we can with a $125,000 grant. The thing about that, that's for one year. But with that, I was able to host a summer bridge program. And will those students please open up your award? They came for five weeks, four hours a day, every day during the summer to learn how to code, to learn how to make their own website and code it themselves, because they understand that coding is a part of everyday life. They understand that African-American, Latino, and Latino-Americans, and yes, our dear student Victor, who is from a very diverse background and represents us all, we are so far behind that it's pathetic. And they are here to be the shining... And they are here to be the shining example of all the talent that we have here in South LA. They are here to represent the whole entire Los Angeles Unified School District. Because of them, Dorsey High School is the only LAUSD school to partner with the College Board in the final pilot year of their Computer Science Principles course. And let me explain this to you, because this is game-changing, and this is groundbreaking. The test is for and about African-American and Hispanic students, but they didn't have us at the table. How can you not have the second-largest school district with this target market that I get all day long represented at the table? This is, we are who they are looking for. So, because President Barack Obama and his staff took a chance to honor me as a connected educator, White House Champion of Change, the College Board listened. So, now, we're at the table. We represent the entire United States, because we're at the table, and nobody has this demographic the way we have it here in South LA. So, Herb Wesson, Council President Herb Wesson, we want to applaud you today. We want to thank you today for taking a chance and giving us that extra shot. Yes, I'm on a $1 million fundraising campaign, and I know I'm going to get there, but what you see behind me, who you see behind me, is priceless. Google has finally stepped up to the table with a recommendation and a referral from Mayor Garcetti's office, and we received a $25,000 grant to launch their Computer Science First program at Dorsey High School that the students behind me will go to middle schools and elementary schools to train those students who will feed into our schools in South LA. Not me, you need to let them do it, peer-to-peer, because when those middle-schoolers and elementary school students see our high school students, they're going to say, "I want to do that. I want to be just like him. I just want to be just like her." And they're looking for girls, got it. We got two rows full of girls, black and brown, beautiful girls, right here in South LA. And I didn't have to campaign or beg to get them. So, I want Dorsey High School to tell City Council, what does STEAM stand for?
Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math.
Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. It all starts right here, and we need the support of every council member here. We need you to support, to support your president, because he's laid a very strong foundation with someone who appreciates him and what he does and is his friend. When you're friends, it makes a lot of difference, because you become family. And that's what we are here today as a family, and we would like for all of you to join our family. And just to let you know, some of the students here who don't have computers at home, apply to get computers through your program. That's at Dorsey High School. So, there's, there's nothing that we cannot provide. There's no, "I can't do this because..." Let me know what your problem is, and collectively, we will solve it. So, I want to thank you. And I want to thank my students, because dealing with me every day is hard, because it takes a lot of hard work, and I'm a hard walker, to get this right here. But look at what you get, and they're very smart. We're almost paperless, we do everything in the cloud, and they're very proud. And today, I want to thank all of you for paying attention, because it's going to be a different game when they leave here today, because they've never been honored or seen it like this. Now, the question is, who's going to go with me back to DC to show this right here? So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give it up. Mr. Bloomingfield, the computers that she's talking about is the program that you and the mayor and I worked on. And so, I mean, that's exciting that we're providing computers for the individuals in an area that, that are so, so behind. But, members, in closing, there is a crisis. There is a serious crisis in education today. That's why, Mr. Rue, one of the reasons why we created the committee that you chair, is that there is a role and a responsibility of the council to be at the table where it relates to, to education. And if we don't recognize how far our children are behind, and if we don't do what's necessary to put them in a position to compete in the future, all of these great jobs, well-paying jobs, are not going to go to the sons and the daughters of the people that we represent. So, we have an obligation to them. So, again, let's give it up one more time for Dorsey High School and Daphne Bradford. Thank you, Mr. President.
We do have Mr. Weezer on the queue.
Thank you, and I just quickly wanted to stand up and applaud you, Mr. President, you as well, Daphne, Daphne, because, you know, when we look at our country and the future of this country, next to national security, there's no more important issue than what you're doing. Because in order for us to have the workforce necessary for this country to continue to compete, we need our students to join the STEAM fields. But the problem is that our minority, our students of color, are not going into these fields, and you are doing it. And you're doing it, fighting tooth and nail, moving forward, finding whatever resources you can to do it. So, you and here, we are doing one of the most important things for this country right now. We applaud these students. And last, let me say, when you said you're tough on them, the students all agree, they're in the back of you going, "Yes, yes." But keep doing what you're doing, we applaud you. Thank you so much, it's incredible. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And, Mr. President, I need to join in this court for one minute, because...
But let me jump in and say, she is very strict. She made me shut up.
As you did just me. So, no, brilliant, incredible, what you, what you continue to do. And the crazy thing is this, that while it's brilliant, and you are tenacious, and keep doing what you're doing for all of these students and the future students, they should be basics. We've got to stop this digital divide, and it's not just learning about the future or today, it's not just job training and programming, it's also the social skills. That's how folks, young folks are communicating nowadays. I have two daughters. I was driving with my youngest daughter, who's 16, and a carload of friends she had, and it was silent. You couldn't hear anything in the car, none of them were talking, and then, all of a sudden, they all start bursting out and laughing at the same time. They've all got their phones, and they're in group chat, and they're sitting next to each other, that's how they communicate. My, my mother used to tell me that she used to walk uphill both ways to school in the snow. I tell my kids, you know, "I used to have to get off the couch to go answer the phone. I used to have to run barefoot across the cold tile." It's a different world now. It's in the palm of your hand, the entire world, and to explore and to learn. Just to get a job in automotive repair, you have to be a computer technician. Everything you've got to do now requires that training at an early age, and we've got to stop this digital divide. God bless you for what you're doing, you're doing a phenomenal job, and thank you, Mr. Wesson, for bringing all these wonderful kids here.
Where's Ms. Joanna Gay? Where are you standing up? Let's give her a round of applause. She's moving forward and, and the current teacher. But again, members, other countries start their children coding when they're four and five years old. If this great nation wants to compete, then we need to do better. And, Mr. Rue, that's why I look forward to working with you where it relates to the education component of your committee, because there's a lot of work to do. Thank you all, give them one more round of applause.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
We're going to go this way. Follow us, guys.
Yes, sir, that would be to October 6th, sir.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection, so October 6th. We also have a request for 1I for two weeks, so we'll go ahead and move that for two weeks without objection as well.
And that would be October 6th, sir.
Great, thank you. We also have a request to move item 15 forthwith, so we'll go ahead and move that forthwith without objection. Okay, and let's go ahead and take up item 7. We don't have cards, so council members, item 7 is now before us. We'll go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And let's go ahead and take up item 52, 52, and I believe we have two-speaker cards on 52. Brian Barajas, followed by Wayne. Before we open it up, so Brian, if you want to come on up, Mr. Bloomingfield?
On this item, I ask to recuse myself, as my wife is employed by the Discovery Foundation.
Okay, if you want to go ahead and step outside the room during a recusal, please, then we'll go ahead and do that, and we'll bring you back in. Keep him on the board? Oh, no, we take him off the board, he's already stated, so I'm sorry, take him off the board. Mr. Barajas?
Okay, well, very simple comment, Discovery Science Center, yes, great, you're funding it. I think one of the issues that I think was brought up was that the fact that our ability to fund the education of the youth, pretty much, this is just one perfect example, I don't know what the hell is going on, but I think this country has a big problem with funding the future.
Thank you very much, Wayne. Pass? Okay, pass. All right, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, next item, please.
If we could send that forthwith, please?
Okay, there's a request from Mr. Fuentes to send that forthwith, that'll be sent forthwith by Mr. Fuentes, or requested by, without objection, that'll be the order. Let's go ahead and take item 38.
That's item 38, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Wayne, 38?
So, Denise Campos, the El Pueblo de Los Angeles Historic Monument Authority, resolver que el acate apuntar señora Denise Campos al pueblo de Los Angeles Monumento Historica por autoridad de aprobado y confirmación. Señor Campos vive en Consejo Distrito 14? Ah, Jose Weezer, yay! Una, una background, no submetido. Quién es Denise Campos? No sé. Qué tiene en banco? No sé. Discosero de financieros? Sumitito, pero el background, no sé. No quiero este apuntamiento este momento.
Mr. Hunt? Not here? Okay. And we'll go ahead and open up Mr. O'Farrell.
President, thank you. I just want to acknowledge Denise Campos, my friend, many friends you have around this horseshoe Denise, appointed to El Pueblo, and they want to get her on the commission so fast that I waved her through Arts Parks Committee to get her right to council, because she's such a strong, a strong appointee to this commission. Denise is from Los Angeles, she's in Angelino, and she has over 13 years of experience, including working for council members Ruth Galanter, Jose Weezer, City Attorney Rocky Delgado, Elias D., School Board Member Tamar Gallitzin, and then, working for the Commission of Youth and Their Families. Denise, we welcome you wholeheartedly to the commission, we know you're going to do a lot of great work there in El Pueblo. Not always easy, there are lots of things to untangle and lots of things to work on there, so that we can make this incredible visitor destination for Los Angeles, a very, very special place, and we know that the work that you do there is going to just enhance that experience for everyone. So, I just wanted everyone to acknowledge Denise for who she is and what she's going to be able to accomplish on that commission, and I ask for unanimous I vote to have her appointed, and thank you for stepping up to volunteer.
Great, thank you. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to echo the words of Councilman O'Farrell, I think we have before us a well-rounded individual with lots of experience, but more importantly, not only the experience, but the commitment and the passion for our city. When Ms. Campos worked for me, and having grown up here in the city of LA, she mentioned a love for this city, and what better place to have an individual like this but serve on where the city was founded, and El Pueblo, and the commission that we have there does some very important work, and not only moving El Pueblo forward as a place, but it, it goes beyond that, because we often talk about the birthplace of the city and what Los Angeles means, and so, you have a voice to talk about, not only about El Pueblo, but everything else that is Los Angeles. There's been a lot of important issues, for example, the merchants there were going without leases for over 15, 20 years. We now got them their leases, I think you were probably in my office, when people would tell us that the leases at El Pueblo were their third rail of politics in Council District 14, nobody wanted to touch them because they're so politically wired. But we were able to do that, and now, we have some leases that make sense, that allow the merchants to stay there for a very long time. But what's important about that is that we keep families who have been with us for generations keeping El Pueblo alive, a very important post, but I couldn't think of a better person to serve here. Thank you, Denise, for your willingness to serve, your volunteerism, and all the work you've done already for this city, and which you will continue to do. I ask for an I vote.
Excellent, thank you very much. Councilmember Bonin?
Thank you very much. I also rise to support Denise. I think I've probably known Denise longer than anybody on the council. I worked with her in Ruth Galanter's office, and not on the West Side. The 6th District, in the time we worked together, had moved out to the Valley, so she staffed Ms. Galanter in Sun Valley, and she was a gem and a find in our office at that time. I remember very vividly that she came into this job dedicated to helping people and put them first every single day. She spent a lot of time seeking out folks, young people, whose voices had not been heard or brought into the process. She worked with them, she energized them, and she helped put together events with them, and I think gave them an entirely different taste of what local government can be. And I think that that was a really powerful thing you did in teaching them about how their voice could be heard and how they could make change. And I've watched your career flourish, going from the city to LAUSD, and now to the gas company. You're a tremendous person, you'll bring a lot to this job. Not only are you a very hard worker, but you have tremendous heart, and that's a great thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And before we actually vote, did you bring any family with you? That's the most important question, we've always got to ask for your support, and we will support you, who do you have with you today? Fantastic, let's give her and her parents a big round of applause, she'd be very, very proud. As we cast our vote, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Congratulations, that is unanimous, Madam Commissioner, thank you very much, thank you, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go to the... All right, we'll go ahead and go to the next item. I believe we'll take 44, 47, and 53 together, so 44, 47, and 53, all called special for cards. John Walsh? 44, 47, and 53, how many?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at HollywoodDems. 44 concerns the Arizona Nuclear Power Project, which gives us DWT, DWP power. Let me tell you, you're getting rid of the, you're getting rid of the coal plant, but you still believe in nuclear power. Can someone tell me why nuclear power is politically correct and coal is politically incorrect? I'm telling you right now, number 44, when you turn on the lights, it's a nuclear power plant, but when it blows up, it'll only kill the people in Arizona, and they're Republicans anyway. And number 47, and this concerns Hollywood Boulevard Walk of Fame, I'm glad you're putting Cool and the Gang up there, about 20 years too late, they're from the '70s, aren't they? Oh, that's right, their skin is black, and if your skin is black, your chances of getting on the Hollywood Walk of Fame is about 30 percent of someone whose skin is my color. In fact, Cool and the Gang should complain, because the Hollywood Walk of Fame is absolutely in terrible condition. It's falling apart, it's cracked, it's not kept up, come to my website, take a look at what the Hollywood Walk of Fame looks like now, it's the Walk of Shame, and, but Cool and the Gang, of course, deserve this. Okay, number 53, this concerns, I mean, the sale of 30 bicycles to Fleet Street? I keep telling you, we have the worst sidewalks in the world, and what are you doing? You become bicycle salesman, I don't understand why you're selling these bicycles, and you're giving them a good deal because you know who they are. This is 30 bicycles at a market value of $1 apiece, $1 bicycles, to sail to Fleet Street. Well, the name of the company should be changed from Fleet Street to Very Slow Street. These issues on the agenda make absolutely no sense, but I like on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, Cool and the Gang, I want everybody to go to the website to see HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, and see the state, the sorry deterioration of the Hollywood Walk of Fame to the whole world, stay off Hollywood, or the gangs will kill you. Remember, there's a gang war going on right now, that's why the, and it flares up on Hollywood Boulevard when the gangs cross at the clubs. HollywoodHighlands.org, Cool and the Gang, 100 percent deserve it, 20 years too late, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Arizona Nuclear Power Project, oh, that's good, that's part of the, giving the nuclear power to Iran, and now the Environmental Quality Act of California is under Barack Obama's new program to start up nuclear power all over the world, yay! And that's a great thing, because later on, you can use the nuclear power plant to get a fission bomb, and fission bombs are good, because nuclear power and nuclear bombs help maintain peace and order, because you know, if somebody with a puppet has his finger on the button, you're not going to screw with that country, huh, no, 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 no.
Misprized.
So I'm in favor, I like nuclear power, yes, vote yes.
Yes, good morning, it is Sean Murphy from CD2. All Colts, yeah, this item will be, be in order by the year 2077, all of L.A. should have Colt. Thank you.
Followed by Mr. Hunt, is Mr. Hunt back in the room? No, we'll go ahead and file your card then.
All right. I just wanted to speak on the nuclear power disagreement that you're having, I really do believe that the issue of nuclear power, if this is the activities that you're taking, that you're bringing in more nuclear energy. I am in total support of that, because this country has gone backwards. A lot of people don't understand what civil uses of a nuclear approach is that we should have had since Kennedy was murdered. This country should have actually gone into fusion power. Nuclear power is just, was the beginning. In the beginning of the 20th century, we knew that we could have had fusion energy, but again, a lot of people have been dumbed down, and they absolutely support some false ideas in their heads. And so the thing is, the problem here is, we should have gone nuclear. Coal power would have been reduced, and we wouldn't have this fracking situation on our hands. So the more that we push for nuclear facilities, civil uses of a facility of nuclear energy, the more this country can move forward. But until people get the idea of why nuclear power was the very thing that should have moved the 20th century into the 21st century, the very fact that we lost the capacity to think in that direction shows that this country has been moving backwards. Some of the people who believe that nuclear energy is somehow bad, don't understand what the policies should have been after Kennedy, or Robert Kennedy's death.
Great, I don't believe we have any other cards on, so 44 and 47, let's go ahead and open the roll on 44 and 47. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on 44 and 47, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen I's.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and take item, okay. Okay, and please don't stand in the middle of the aisle, if you've got any issues or you filled out a card, you could take it up with the sergeant-at-arms on the side of the table, if you're going to stand in the middle of the aisle, you're going to be asked to leave. You will not yell out in this meeting, you're disrupting the meeting. Juan, you've got to sit down, if you have any issues, you know the rules, you've got to go to the side, and please speak with the sergeants, they'll help you out, but don't stand in the middle of the aisle and disrupt the meeting, please, thank you. Eric Previn? On 53.
And, Mr. President, for item 53, a substitute motion has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Mr. Previn, did you wish to speak on this item? I'm sorry, I'm not going to hold your time, sir, so if you wish to speak, you've got to approach the podium now. I'm sorry, sir, you filled out the speaker card for 53, sir, if you're going to speak, it's got to be now, because it is holding up the meeting.
Sir, yes, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, thank you, Mr. Englander, what is the substitute motion, because it was just circulated, sir, so there's not one on the bulletin board, as you look over there, there's just not, I don't know, I could come back in a minute, once I've seen it, but it's, if it's just a technical amendment, is it, or what is the difference?
It's a technical amendment.
What is the technical detail?
If you want to wait, it's going to be posted right now.
Okay, I'll wait, I'll come back, thank you.
That's fine, I'll come back to you. Juan?
That's his time, that's not my time. All right, that's better.
It's our time, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah. On these sales of the bicycles, can I have any way to check if they are not the bicycles that have been stolen from me over the last two, three years? I lost about 35 bicycles already, I still have 15, I counted them this morning, but they've been stealing bicycles from me, and are you selling them for a dollar? Come on, dude, I paid at least 10 bucks for each bike. What the hell kind of business deal is this? You take my bikes and then you sell them for a dollar? Huh? I lost three bikes right here at City Hall, and you got these security cameras and everything, and it does no good. People are stealing bicycles all over town, and there's no security in this city. I know you want to know, say that your city is so beautiful and hanky-dory, no, 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 it's full of potholes, it's very dangerous. Ask Mr. Walsh, nobody's ever collected any reward, hardly. People get run over all the time, because you don't have a decent bicycle path, and there's no way to secure your bike. The city keeps stealing them and reselling them for a dollar. That's ridiculous. You guys need money that bad? I mean, I thought you had limousines and stuff like that, you don't need bicycles. Mr. Bonin, do you ever ride a bike?
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Previn, did you want, you wish to come up and speak now, that it's been posted?
Thank you, Mr. Englander, it is Eric Previn from CD2. Now I've, I've seen this substitute motion, so to be clear, this is making Fleet Street Inc. are going to be eligible to purchase 30 bicycles that are, it's my understanding, old LAPD bikes from over at, at their facility over there at Piper Tech, where we sign up for elections and such, and so there's 30 bikes, and we're going to make them available for a buck to this group. This group is called Fleet Street Inc., and this is a nonprofit located in the San Fernando Valley, so these are, these are my people, sir. And what they do is they repair used bikes, skateboards, and other such non-motorized things, and donate them to members of the public who need them. So this is kind of like a staging area for helping the little folks, so I do appreciate it, I think. When I, when I look, they say that basically, if the county were, or the city were to sell these bikes, it would be about 300 bucks, so that's 10 bucks a bike. So, you know, this, every little bit helps, let's just say, and this is a Granada Hills based operation, sir, so that wouldn't be your district, that's Mr. Blumenfield's district, and, you know, there's a lot of donating going on, Mr. Englander, in this, in this hall, we have the great folks at Motorola helping out, in your district recently, we have certainly the YMCA helped out with the $250,000, how you doing?
This is not on the subject.
Well, it's on donations.
It's not on the subject, this is specifically, yeah, it's not on.
Specifically on the bikes, okay, well, thank you. Bike lobby is very powerful down here, Ciclovia is something we all appreciate, and I must tell you, the bicycle lobby is worth, since I've got the 22 seconds, I mean, these guys, the mayor, nobody has done more for bicycling than the mayor, Garcetti, and the city council of Los Angeles, not, not just Mr. Bonin and the transportation team, but, but this entire body is committed to bicyclists over everybody else, and we do very much appreciate that, those of us who are bicyclists. The other, sort of 9 million of us are less.
Okay, thank you very much, so on items 53 now, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and open the roll. And this is to substitute first, so open the roll on whether to substitute and close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen I's.
And now we'll go ahead and take up the substitute, substitute motion is before us, and we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen I's.
Great, thank you. Okay, I think we can go ahead and take item 51 now, there's a substitute motion.
It's not posted.
So on 51, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the substitute motion on 51, close the roll, and tabulate the vote, and now we'll go ahead and actually vote on that item. Yes? Sorry? Okay. Okay, and we'll go ahead and vote on the actual item, open the roll, please, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen I's.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take item 58 now, the closed session item, and we'll go ahead and take the cards first. Okay, Mr. Hunt? Not here.
Yes, I got to go into closed session, man. 58 deals with police abuse. Look at all the people being abused on the schedule. You see all those people suing the city, why? LAPD, police abuse, that's the reason why. The whole city, item 58, 30 plaintiffs, millions of dollars, because LAPD cannot control itself. So when you go and talk about these issues, please, wear a hood, and when you drive in the hood, wear a hood, because it's all about the hood, the KKK and the LAPD is AOK.
Okay, you're off topic, it's not on the topic, it is way off topic, thank you very much. All right. Eric? Did you wish to speak, Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, did you wish to speak? Let's make, go ahead and make a clarification, if we can ask the city attorney why Mr. Previn's making his way up.
And just, just for clarification, this matter is regarding a Fair Labor Standards Act lawsuit regarding unpaid overtime and liquidated damages.
Great, thank you very much. And please clear the center aisle, please don't stand in the middle of the aisle, if you wish to stand, you can stand at the back of the room, unless you're speaking at the podium, no, Mr. Previn, you're good. Sir, stand in the back of the room, or on the side, or please have a seat, thank you very much. Mr. Hunt? Please do not yell out and disturb this meeting, if you do so, you'll be asked to leave. Mr. Previn?
Okay, so this is a fair labor matter, and there are a number of related cases, so I assume you're going in to just, to talk about some kind of a settlement for these, these particular issues. Of course, not comedically, but structurally, we do not know that much about these cases. I Googled through a few of them, they are of note. Of course, I'm very interested in some of the labor practices at LAPD and this, I follow quite closely, sir, though, as Dion O'Connell, the city attorney, is doing an outstanding job, by the way, let's, let's acknowledge that the city attorney is doing an outstanding job for this body of minding the store. But the problem is that the case Jeffrey Shoemaker versus City of Los Angeles came through, and there was a large settlement, it was moved out very quickly, they did not publish it until afterwards, so the public had really no chance to speak, and like these, the same thing will happen, you'll go in, you'll possibly announce a settlement, possibly no reportable action, please say no reportable action, even if there is no reportable action, you have to say that, so the public can deescalate and wait.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Oscar Mohammed? Oscar Mohammed?
Yes, my name is Oscar Speaker. For the president, speak for the struggling poor, speak for culture change. We have our police department is very unconstitutional. The Constitution of America is a book for all citizens. And I think the Constitution said one race should not have authority over another race. I think it's come with separate but equal. But some type of way through the civil rights era, the civil rights era took us down the wrong course. We should have more responsibilities through law enforcement. We got too much power in the hands of criminals. We have too much authority in the hands of criminals. Criminals should not have no authority. Criminals should not have no power. We should have our own black law enforcement officer to patrol the black community. We should expect more accountability from leadership. We should remove the black homeless from downtown Los Angeles, California. No other.
It's not, sir, you're not on topic at all.
What topic are you talking about?
If you could please speak. We announced the topic before. We called the speakers up. It's on the agenda item. The city attorney gave specific details about what it is.
58 on the agenda item. Yes, the police.
But you've got to stick to what is actually on the agenda and what we're actually going to be voting on. Correct.
How they evicted, how they shoot unarmed black people at will and say that.
That's not, that's not what the topic is about, though. Absolutely, if you want to come back for general public comment, you can do that. But that is not what the topic is about.
Police Department, misconduct. Item 58.
If you want to go back and start talking, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Kokorian then.
Just ask for an aye vote on the city attorney's recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me, if you're going to yell out, this is your second warning now that you're yelling out from, excuse me. We've called all the cards as we always do. If you have a question, sir, you know the rules. You're here all the time. If you do have a question, you can go to the side and speak with our officers, as you know. We don't yell out and disturb the meeting. You don't just yell out from the audience and just ask any questions you want at any time. You can fill out a card. If you don't have a card, if you have a card, we certainly call your name up every time. And if you don't have a card, we don't call. It's not that complicated. When we do call your card, your name, if you're not in council chambers, we don't go back to it. So we file it that we called your name out and that's what we do. So, okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and open the roll on that item.
Pardon me, sir. Beforehand, I should first read.
Yes, please.
The settlement amount. In the cases entitled Robert Alanis versus City of Los Angeles, Caesar Motta et al. versus City of Los Angeles, and 16 additional lawsuits, there is a recommendation to expend $85,000 in settlement of unpaid overtime and liquidated damages.
All righty, thank you very much. So with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take item 1 now for cards, 1F first. Arterio Galvin? I'm just trying to read the writing there.
Mr. President?
Mr. Weezer, yes.
Did you call 1F?
I'm calling 1F now.
Yeah, we want to, we're going to request that to be continued for one week.
Very well, that's probably why they're not here. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue that for one week. That'll take us, that's council recess, actually, so it looks like it'll be the first meeting after the recess of October 6th. Is that okay? Okay, then that'll be the order without objection?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. And, yes, Mr. Kretz.
I'd like to ask that item 1B be reconsidered and then continued for two weeks as well.
Okay, so we'll consider, reconsider 1B.
Sir, we haven't, we haven't yet considered 1B. So without objection, if you'd like, you can continue that to October 6th as well.
Great, done. Want to call on item 1? Ma'am, if you have a question, if you want to go ahead and ask the sergeant, go to the sides and ask the sergeant. Thank you very much.
Item 1. I do not understand why the city has control over the people, over the real estate, since it only causes a lot more problems for the people. The problem of having to answer to city council for every damn little detail, sometimes it's not even your fault. And you put liens on people's property and then you have the right to sell the house from under the person that has worked all their lives just to have a place to live. It's called lien on the people. Lien on everybody because city council is never satisfied with the money they get. They got to go out and bother the people and get more money and more money and more money. I don't think you are good people when you are up there.
Stay on the subject matter, please.
Yeah, the subject is.
It's not talking about what kind of people who are what? Stay on the subject matter.
You're not good people.
You're not on the subject matter. Stay on the subject matter.
West Vermont for $5,000. A lien on North Orange for $2,000 and some. A lien on another property. A lien on another property. A lien on another one, $1,000 and some. A lien, what the hell? By the time, by the time we get through one year of liens in this city council, you have put liens on everybody in the city. What the hell is wrong with you?
Excuse me, now you're disrupting the meeting. Debbie Castellan?
Good morning. My name's Debbie Castellan. I'm representing 303 North Pacific. I'm asking for a two-week extension. I finally got my information from the Department of Housing, Building and Safety, and I hope we can resolve this in two weeks.
Was that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do I have to reappear if we resolve this?
We'll get to it as soon as, if we resolve, if we, well, if we vote on it here and now, you do not have to reappear. If we extend it, then you would.
Okay.
Or we would ask that you would. You don't have to.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Totally up to you. Okay. With that, Mr. Hunt? Here? Wayne? Oh, it's Mr. Hunt, okay.
The red chi, huh? Is that the name on the card, sir?
Mr. Hunt? That's you. That's you.
And what are we talking about? An ordinance that's unconstitutional?
Sir, please stick to the item.
Well, can you read my name right, sir? That's the first thing.
Okay, now you're disrupting the meeting. You're not speaking on the item. That's your third warning.
That's, well, we're speaking on liens now. Now, we always have these liens. Give the people a break on the liens. And if you're going to sit up in the chair and.
You're not on topic, sir. If you're going to stay on topic, excuse me, that's your fourth time. We're not going to have a dialogue. Stay on topic.
That's why you asshole.
Okay, you're out of, your time is up on this matter. Clearly not on topic. Wayne?
Yes, I like to talk about the liens. As a pig, I live in a land and my brothers and sisters and fellow animals.
You're not on topic, sir. You're not on topic at all. So if you're going to go speak on topic, then go ahead and do that.
Yes, the fucking liens are not constitutional. I looked at the whole list and I determined that all of these people cannot approve by a court of law that these liens are legal and are constitutional under the California Constitution. It is a requirement that there be a certification and recordation of a valid lien under the California Civil Code, not the California Cuban Civil Code, the fucking California Civil Code. So you need to file and receive, Mr. Wu, you need to file and receive.
Okay, do not address members of the council.
These fucking liens are no good.
Stick to the agenda item. Yeah, okay. Okay, on the remaining items, council members, on item 1, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you. Those are approved. Okay, Juan? Item 55. We have item 55 before us.
I lost track for a second, sir.
Sir, please speak to the topic. If you're going to just stand there, then we'll forfeit your time.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back on the same page as you are. Right here, this motion, Price, Harrison, Dawson, relative to the reinstating of the reward offer on the deaths of Brenda Aguilera and John Placencia. Oh, boy. This is a sad topic. Too many murders in this city with nobody knowing who did it, who done it. And we're desperately trying to find out who did it, who done it by offering money as a reward. And according to Mr.
Thank you, Juan. Wayne? Item 55.
Yeah, snitches get stitches. And I be telling you about all this stuff about these rewards. $75,000 for the June 25th, 2008. 2008, y'all, that's seven years. That too much time. All the snitches are all dead now, along with the deaths of the victims. So the snitches are all done and the snitches are going to get stitches, y'all. And we can't have that. Now, if you go $750,000, 10 times more, now you get a couple of snitches. And I can go down to the hood and I can find some snitches and get you that for $750,000. So how about it, my keys? See, let's do that tonight, man. Let's solve this crime, this seven-year-old crime.
Just speak to the council as a whole.
By going $750,000!
Is it Mr. and Mrs. Jenkins? Yes, I'm sorry. Trying to read the writing. I apologize. Mr. Jenkins?
Yes, I'd like to also comment on the fact that the council will not take cards that they say are late. And that was a very important topic that I wanted to talk about, but you folks said, I can't talk about it because you took my card late. So I'll talk about this one. We're dealing with the water and power, right? This is about the water and power and the money from the power, uh, ref, uh, revenue fund.
Sir, you're off topic.
Isn't that, we're on 57? Huh?
It's 55. 55, sir.
55. I'm sorry. The hell?
We'd like to give a shout out while you're looking for your page, the grand jury that just left. We wanted to thank them for their service and coming on by. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, can you, can you put a few more seconds on there, sir, since you took time to?
I'll let you finish up.
Grand jury.
You were looking for your place and what number we were on. But that's fine. I'll give you more time.
Thank you. Uh, Brendan, uh, you're going to, you're going to offer the sum of $75,000 maximum sum payment of the city reward. Are you giving, are you putting out rewards for crazy firemen who stalk people? Are you putting out rewards for that? Well, you need to because your fire department, there's a, there's an epidemic of heroin addiction in your fire department. And I suggest that you investigate that because your fire department.
Mr. President, this is not on this topic.
You cut my mic off?
All right. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on item 55. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and actually reconsider all the ordinances. So, colleagues, we'll go ahead and reconsider all the ordinances. We'll open the roll for reconsideration.
I'm sorry, sir. Those would be items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 11, 12, 13, 14, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43.
Those are correct. So we'll go ahead and reconsider those. Those are before us for reconsideration. We'll open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, now those items are actually before us now. And we'll open the roll and vote on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and take items, item 37.
And for item 37, amending motion 37A has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, Sean, on item 37?
I'm against.
Hold on a second. Okay, actually, Mr. O'Farrell, I apologize. Public hearing was already held on this item, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, when we returned from summer recess on July 1st, Council President Weston and I introduced a motion which basically requests the Human Relations Commission and other local agencies to report within 60 days with a plan for the city to engage in conversations and activities with regard to race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, diversity, multiculturalism. And we had several seconds. This is something, I rose last week and spoke about all the important work that the Human Relations Commission does for the city of Los Angeles, including cover the topics that I just mentioned on a citywide basis in addition to countering violent extremism. This is a very, very important commission at this point and a city agency that does really important work and for the obvious reasons that have been stated over and over again with all that's happening out there in the greater world, but the city of Los Angeles as well. It's so important that we take every opportunity we can to enhance and improve relations between the LAPD and our communities and relation-based policing, et cetera. What I want to do is just highlight a couple of individuals. We have Deputy Chief B. Gormala who is here, and I'd like to acknowledge you, chief, for being here. Thank you so much for all of your work just with what you do in, in relation to this particular topic over the years. And you're particularly. particular topic over the years, and you're particularly tasked with this, and I think your department and your particular perspective are gonna add so much as you report back on how we can improve relations across the city with all of these issues. And also, you know, again, Patricia Viasenior, the Executive Director of HRC, is with us. Again, this amending motion simply asks, requests to include the Police Department in the list of the departments and agencies to be participating in the preparation of the report, which will be coming back to my committee. This is, as we've discussed before in council, an ongoing indefinite dialogue and a definite endeavor to just improve relations across the city, to make the city safer, to bridge misunderstandings that can escalate out of control, and all of it preventable if we just engage in dialogue, clearing up misunderstandings, and making sure that we all work collaboratively to improve and enhance the quality of life across the city. So I ask for your aye vote in approving this motion as amended, so we can move forward on these very, very important discussions in the most multicultural city in the United States, Los Angeles. Thank you, colleagues, and I ask for an aye vote.
Okay, thank you, seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
We have one item left, fifty-seven. And do we have any? Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go into closed session, and public comment was already satisfied, so we'll go ahead and go into closed session on item fifty-seven. So if we can please ask the council chambers to be cleared, we're gonna stay in here, colleagues, so if we can please ask the sergeants, members of the public, if you can please step out, we're gonna go into closed session. And if we can please, on channel thirty-five as well, we'll go into closed session as we're clearing the chambers, one staff member per council office.
It was a DWP reference, alright. So, we do still have general public comment in front of us. Okay, Wanacala? Come on up. Followed by Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt? Going once? Going twice? Not here? Okay, we'll follow your card.
No, he's here!
Do not yell out, please.
Oh, I just saw him.
Followed by Eric Previn next, after Wanacala. Is Eric Previn here? Eric Previn? Not here? Oh, you're here? Okay, then you'll be following Juan. Okay, Juan, go ahead.
General public comment? I'm running for mayor. If you miscount my votes this time around, I'm gonna recall the whole election. Last time I ran for city councilman at Venice Beach, Bonin, and they said I only got three votes. That's pure bullshit, because I had at least 10 or 12 people say I voted for you. So if you miscount my votes, you can count on recalling the whole damn election. And you're worried about money? How much is it gonna cost you to recall the whole election? Because it shows that you're a crooked buddy... Oh, what the hell are you? I don't know. There's only one sweet person here. Ms. Martinez.
Yes, it is Eric... Hello, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And today, item 21, Council President Englander, was an item that had to do with a preferential speaking program for neighborhood council members at city hall meetings and agency meetings. This is an item where Herb Wesson has decided that maybe if the... There's about 1,000 of them, because there's 100 councils, each of them have 10-plus members. If they want to come down to raise a matter of interest to this board or on their agenda, they will get five minutes and a preferential kind of seat at the table. Now, I like the idea of a seat at the table, because I think that the public has always been the ones who sort of felt that about government meetings. But if there was... Oh, there you are, sir. Nice to see you. If there was a way to not do that, but in fact, open all of the items that are on the agenda on a weekly basis, daily basis, to members of the public to come down? Because ask Morris or Duarte every day, 10 or 15 people come down and say, "Hey, I came down to talk on homeless..." Insert the content. It's on the agenda, but they're denied, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. William Wilson?
Good morning. I'm here on Regazopol. My church, we in the 8th district, and it looks like trash dump around there. We trying to get streets swept. We have trees that's growing on the sidewalk, they broke total sidewalk, all the pieces. It has... The debris has really damaged our drainage on top of our building. And I've called and called, and we haven't got any results from it. So, they give me this place to come and put it on the docket, see what the city council could do about it. Thank you. It's the 8th district.
Alright, Henry? Alright, Henry followed by Oscar, followed by Brian Brahas, in that order? If you want to line up behind the second set of velvet ropes, Oscar, and then Brian?
As you know, ongoing MOUs show how much our city, hacker, and county officials agreed to shelter from pay of public employees.
It was a DWP reference, alright. So, we do still have general public comment in front of us. Okay, Wanacola? Come on up. Followed by Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt? Going once? Going twice? Not here, okay? We'll follow your card.
No, he's here!
Do not yell out, please.
Oh, I just saw him.
Followed by Eric Previn next, after Wanacola. Is Eric Previn here? Eric Previn? Not here? Oh, you're here? Okay, then you'll be following Juan. Okay, Juan, go ahead.
General public comment? I'm running for mayor. If you miscount my votes this time around, I'm gonna recall the whole election. Last time I ran for city councilman at Venice Beach, Bonin, and they said I only got three votes. That's pure bullshit, because I had at least 10 or 12 people say I voted for you. So if you miscount my votes, you can count on recalling the whole damn election. And you're worried about money? How much is it gonna cost you to recall the whole election? Huh? Because it shows that you're a crooked buddy of... What the hell are you? I don't know. There's only one sweet person here. Ms. Martinez.
Yes, it is Eric... Hello, it is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And today, item 21, Council President Englander, was an item that had to do with a preferential speaking program for neighborhood council members at city hall meetings and agency meetings. This is an item where Herb Wesson has decided that maybe if the... There's about 1,000 of them, because there's 100 councils. Each of them have 10-plus members. If they want to come down to raise a matter of interest to this board or on their agenda, they will get five minutes and a preferential kind of seat at the table. Now, I like the idea of a seat at the table, because I think that the public has always been the ones who sort of felt that about government meetings. But if there was... Oh, there you are, sir. Nice to see you. If there was a way to not do that, but in fact, open all of the items that are on the agenda on a weekly basis, daily basis, to members of the public to come down? Because Ask Morris or Duarte every day, 10 or 15 people come down and say, "Hey, I came down to talk on homeless..." Insert the content. It's on the agenda, but they're denied, sir.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. William Wilson?
Good morning. I'm here on regards of my church. We in the 8th district, and it looks like a trash dump around there. We trying to get streets swept. We have trees that's growing on the sidewalk. They broke total sidewalk, all to pieces. It has... Debris has really damaged our drainage on top of our building. And I've called and called, and we haven't got any results from it. So, they give me this place to come and put it on the docket, see what the city council can do about it. Thank you. It's the 8th district.
Alright. Henry? Alright, Henry, followed by Oscar, followed by Brian Brahas, in that order. If you want to line up behind the second set of velvet ropes, Oscar, and then Brian.
As you know, ongoing MOUs show how much our city, hacker, and county officials agreed to shelter from pay of public employees and sheltered in all the wrong places longer than the law allows. Consequently, Myers, Miller's Brown Act shows you cannot contribute money to public employees to private sector union officials. Labor Code 28283 shows that you gotta make back payments if you screw up in the first place. Consequently, all the money that you sheltered and failed to recover in the past has to be recovered and turned over to public employee pension and benefit plans. Now, I gave you this paper last week. I spelled out the problems, and I showed you the solutions. And you ain't did a damn thing yet. Oh, sorry. I ain't FOB or BB.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you. Hello, welcome back.
Yeah, Oscar Mahoney. I'd like to speak about the humbliness in downtown Skid Row. It's the worst environment that the black folks in America live in. You do not see nobody in America sleeping on the sidewalk by Los Angeles, California, where the homeless is. We have race in our politics. Have one race treated different from another race. We should end capitalism, capitalism and greed. The capitalists say we're rich with the money, and you are poor without the money. We still have a monopoly on American money. But the American money should be able to circulate more freely than where it is. It should have more fair planning to the citizens that deserve the needs of the money for the rescue. We should make our police more accountable. We should end police brutality. Policemen in Los Angeles, California, shoot unarmed people at will without any accountability. We should end too much power in hands of criminals, too much authorities in the hands of criminals. We should make our leaders be more responsible for their deeds.
Okay. We have a team of our organizers in San Francisco. It was brought to my attention that one of our banners depicts Obama and Queen Elizabeth. And it reads, "Obama is an asshole." It's very simple. Anybody dealing with world events knows that Jeremy Corbyn, leader of the Labour Party, his politics is right where we are at. Glass-Steagall, elimination of the monarchy. In the United States, Mike Gravel, anybody who knows him, former Senator Alaska, has joined our movement to push for the BRICS. That is Brazil, Russia, India, China, South Africa, and World Development. These breakthroughs, and specifically in United Nations, means that the direction preventing World War III is at hand.
Mr. Jenkins? No longer here? John Walsh?
They won't tell you why they went into closed session. There is a lawsuit that will, if it prevails, will prevent the DWP from transferring a quarter of a billion dollars of profit, of surplus money, every year to the city of Los Angeles. If that prevails, the city of Los Angeles will be bankrupt and not be able to host the Olympics. They're not telling you what's really happening here. You can only find out from yours truly, hollywoodhighlands.org. Anybody but Englander for supervisor, no Olympics in LA 2024. Or you're gonna have a huge race riot that will redound throughout the entire world. Go to Paris, where they don't allow black people to riot, because they hit them over the head. Glenn Dake? I think we should put him... He's the mayor's gay lover for many years. I think we should put him in charge of the Olympics. And Casey Wasserman, in charge of the Olympics, now is talking about running for mayor. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Sean?
Yesterday's rain... Yesterday's rain was not a joke. Get your storms cleaned up and the gutters cleaned up. We're heading into El Nino. The Jen and I spoke of, it'll be a long time passing. Probably won't hit till the year... You know what I mean. Thank you.
Wayne?
Won't allow Mike Hunt to speak. Racist! No on Mitchell Englander. No on Mitchell Englander. No on Mitchell Englander for the supervisor. The city is a train wreck. Under Charlie Beck and Mitchell Englander, vote no on Mitchell Englander for the supervisor seat. Anybody but Mitchell Englander. Look at the way they run the meeting. Now, you gotcha! DWP can't give you free money. We got you! And the end of tyranny is finally coming. You're gonna not get your $277 million of theft from our rates to your general slush fund. Bankrupt city? Yes. No to the Olympics? Because the city can't afford it? And no on Mitchell Englander? Anybody but him.
Mr. Hunt?
This is the real Chief Hunt. I wish you guys read the cards right, first of all. Called the Brown Act. Second of all, read the name on the title of the card. This has been the worst city council ever. You guys have all became jackasses in my eyes. Some of you guys are old jackasses. Some of you guys are fuck white niggers too. The majority of you guys is fuck white niggers too. You guys have no business sitting in these seats right here. You guys are programmed to be puppets. Everything you guys do, you guys are programmed to. It's not a yes or no. It's programmed. And to Mike Fur, fuck you. We got a $100 trial costing the city $120,000. Fuck you, Mike Fur. And Eric Garcetti, see you later, asshole.
Thank you for being so articulate. With that, that concludes our fun time for the agenda. I believe we have items for posting referral. We'll go ahead and post and refer those now.
Mr. President, there's been a request from the Department of Building and Safety to reconsider five items from Friday's meeting so that they can be received and filed. There are five liens that were adopted that were paid in full.
Okay, then let's go ahead and we can... Mr. ... Yes?
Items 12 and 46 forthwith, please?
Okay, as soon as we finish this item, well, 12 and 46 forthwith. And so, do we need to vote on those for reconsideration then?
Yes, sir. And I should first read the council file numbers. That was item 1E, and it's council file number 15-0160-S361, 1H 15-0160-S364, 1K 15-0160-S367, 1P 15-0160...
Excuse me, is there a reason, sir, that you're standing there? If you have any questions, you can go to the side, please. You can have a seat or go to the side of the aisle to go speak with one of the police officers, please.
That's 1P 15-0160-S295, and 1R 15-0160-S211.
Okay, thank you. Can you just read all those one more time? I'm kidding. Okay, we got it. And Councilmember Harris Dawson, please, you've got another request as well?
We'd like to reconsider and continue item 1A for two weeks.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and add that to Mr. Blumenfield's request in a moment. So with those, we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration on those items that were just read, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 aye.
Okay, those are... Items are then before us. And we'll go ahead and vote on those items now.
And, Mr. President, again, items 1E, H, K, P, and R from Friday's meeting, the Department of Building and Safety is recommending that those be received and filed in as much as the liens have been paid in full.
Okay, thank you very much. And so we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 aye.
Now, we have three items for reconsideration before us as well, from... Two from Councilmember Blumenfield, and one from Councilmember Harris Dawson. We'll go ahead and open the roll, reconsideration on those three items.
And, sir, those are items 1A and...
Mr. Blumenfield? I'm sorry, can you repeat your items, please? Mr. Wesson? Mr. Blumenfield? Can you repeat the two items that you wanted?
Items 12 and 46, please.
12 and 46. Oh, though you wanted those forthwith, not for reconsideration. Okay. So, the first one for reconsideration, we'll go ahead and reconsider that item for continuation without objection? We already voted on it, so we have to reconsider it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It was reconsidered, sir.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 aye.
Okay, now we can go ahead and continue it for the period of one... Three weeks? Three weeks, two weeks. Until... It'll be actually, because the council recesses as well, October 7th? Okay, without objection, that'll be the order? Great. And then the other two items we have requested from Councilmember Bob Blumenfield for forthwith consideration, we'll go ahead and do that without objection. That'll be the order as well. Thank you. With that, we have items that are already posted and referred. That should can clear the desk. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, that clears the desk. And colleagues, we are adjourned. Be safe. Thank you. Yeah, there's adjourning motions and announcements and all the other things. So let's go ahead and finish that as well. And we're still live, so... Just making sure that everybody was on their toes and paying attention. And so with that, first, do we have any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, we have an adjourning motion? Yes? Oh, an announcement?
I have an announcement. You're ready to go, huh? I have an announcement. I just wanted to stand and thank all the members for being so warm and empathetic and welcoming of folks that we brought on Saturday, victims, families of victims of homicides. It was a very important step for our community. Councilmember Price and Wesson and Bustaino and Karen Bass and Lucille Roboy Allard held a town hall on Sunday, where about 500 people came and talked about solutions with law enforcement and clergy. And we put forward a motion that has some of the things that came out of that meeting. So I just wanted to thank everybody and appreciate your support of those families as they were here on Friday.
Very nice, thank you. And we're gonna go ahead, seeing no other announcements, adjourning motions? Mr. Harris Dawson, did you have one?
So I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Mr. Fred James Stewart Jr., born in 1927 in Oklahoma. He went to college there, where he became an engineer after serving in the United States military. He worked for the city of Los Angeles after earning his master's degree in public administration from USC in '75. He served with us for 38 years in the Department of Building and Safety. He retired in 1994, but continued to work for many years after that. He was a member and resident of South LA and a member of the Ward AME Church in the 8th district, where he met and married Ann Barnes. And they had children and raised their family here. We lost him about one week ago. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Bonin?
President, colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn in memory today of a man who is the father of not one, not two, but three Los Angeles firefighters. Richard Fields III was born on September 5th, 1935, in Pittsburgh. He served in the US Air Force, and then he was recruited to play football at Arizona State. But he ultimately chose Cal State Los Angeles, which is where he met his lovely wife Elaine. And they raised five beautiful children, Richard IV, Logan, Ethan, Morgan, and Lucia. Mr. Fields has left a lasting and a proud legacy on the city by encouraging his sons, Rich, Logan, and Ethan, to pursue a career in public service. Today, Captain Richard Fields IV, Captain Logan Fields, and firefighter Ethan Fields are proud members of the LAFD. I've had the privilege of working with Rich Fields a lot on some public safety technology initiatives. And I think he's one of the greatest innovators in the department. He and his brothers were instilled the value of public service and giving back by his father. And they all give hundreds of hours to help kids in South Los Angeles. And Rich is also on the board of the Stentorians, which is a nonprofit, community-based organization for African-American firefighters and paramedics and their families. Mr. Fields III passed away on August 28th at age 80 after 50 years of marriage and a full and blessed life. He's survived by his wife Linda, his five children, his sister Beverly, and nine grandchildren. His services were held last Thursday at Inglewood Memorial Park. May he rest in peace.
Alright, thank you. Looking to my left, seeing no others, and to my right, seeing no other adjourning motions, then that does conclude now the council meeting. And we are officially now adjourned. Godspeed, be safe.